... you have been taken care of. It didn't take arm twisting, maybe a little bit. But we, our staff has worked very hard to try to see the concerns that each one of you have. And they're real concerns. They're not just fear of the unknown. They are real concerns. And so I'm so grateful for what the staff has done to be able to alleviate the anxiety that each one of you may feel for property rights. It is very important to me and to you to have your property of value that you purchased and you need that control of your property. The stewards, the people that have been such good stewards of that property, I've been down here for 35 years. My parents have lived in Cottonwood Heights for 70 years. And do you think that things have changed a little bit? We used to have, we didn't realize as children whose property that every piece of land is owned by someone. And when, well, we'll call her, we used to call her Old Lady Latsis. She would shoot us at us with a shotgun if we went into her apple orchard with the shotgun, but it had salt in it. It wasn't BBs. But we didn't understand that was her property. There were no trespassing signs. There was no trespassing signs. It has come that far from where the old mill is. There was nothing there except for the hippie house down there next to it. And they would chase us off sometimes because we might have had allegedly a BB gun every now and then. But we did not understand how important it is that every piece of property is owned by somebody. And your property is only worth what you can do with your property. And so I think that's a very important part of why you're here tonight is because when my parents purchased their home, I think it was either $9,000 or $12,000. And that's how much things have changed. We've seen what's happened to property values. And so it is a very, the largest part of all of your investments is where many for you is where you live and what you can do with your property. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to have all these questions that you have answered and vetted out. So when you have a question that maybe isn't answered by someone else, that you can ask that question and get an answer tonight. So I want to thank the staff. Scott Bracken, District 2. I don't follow them because I'm a District 1. I take care of everything from Highland Drive West. Scott takes, or Council Bracken takes every, well, not everything. His is, I have the best boundary because it's easy.
You're not going to let me be in charge of everything, Doug?
Well, not of everything. I want to introduce our mayor. Many of you may have not know Mayor Mike Wickers, amazing mayor, and he fights for you every day in our city. I'm so grateful for him. Sean Newell is in District 3, has been a great addition to our council and so grateful for him and what he does. Council Burrell in District 4, which takes in a lot of the west side, I'm sorry, the east side up against the mountain and it weaves around a little bit. She is out of the country in much warmer weather than we are right now. So I won't bring her up again because of that. Tim Tingey is sitting in Council Burrell's spot. So, but he is our city manager. He works very hard to keep the staff, both the police and the office side of our city. And we have, when we get lumped in with the, with back in Washington about how government is run, it's very frustrating for us because I'm amazed at the efficiency as a government entity of how well we do as a city here. And I'm so grateful for the work that we do. Now, not everything's perfect. We try to watch everything we can for taxes. Taxes, obviously, schools take the lion's share. We work on 14% of your property taxes. So that's, that is a very big, I guess, unknown to some people. Because when I get my taxes and they go up, I gripe even to our city about it. They try to help me explain why they went up. And it's not because we're taking more as a city. But I'm so grateful for what they're able to do for you and I and our properties and to keep Cottonwood Heights the place we love to live. We live in a wonderful part of the world and we have access to freeways. We have access to the mountains. We have parks that we work on every year and we are maintaining those parks. I'm so grateful for what we're able to do as a city to try to keep the quality of life in Cottonwood Heights what it is. I'm now going to turn the time over if we could. Okay, Scott Bracken. I guess you'll sit in the high chair up there and speak. Is that right?
I'm not nearly as tall as you, Doug. Door is good looking, so, and there's a microphone here that...
I'm just teasing Scott a little bit. I have occasion to do that. So Scott would like to say a few words. And he takes in part, District 2, takes in part of the creek, the riparian and the sleds that we're talking about right now. So Scott, it's all yours.
Sleds is all over. It's not just riparian, although I know that's the focus of what's going on in here tonight. Sleds is also faults, earthquakes, steep slopes, soil types, all kinds of things. Mike will let you, or Mr. Johnson will explain that here in just a little bit. But I do, a little Cottonwood Creek, from Creek Road all the way down to Highland Drive is in District 2. Big Cottonwood Creek goes through Councilman Newell's district. And, you know, we want to make sure that what's done there is good. I will confess, I have not been guilty of carrying a gun of any sort in Cottonwood Heights when I was younger. I grew up a little, just a little bit north of here. We'd go shooting just up over the mountain above Midway. But sign in, there's sheets out in the lobby and along here, and there's chairs out there. Ann's helping with chairs. Don't be shy. You know, pretend you're at church or at home someplace. Go get some extra chairs if you want to sit down. Make yourselves comfortable. I, I'm also glad with the work that, I've been in a lot of discussions with Doug over the last few weeks on these issues. I've listened to the comments that have come in to us at City Council. And honestly, this is, this is what public input is, is there was an issue come up, wording that wasn't perfect or was misunderstood or misleading, whatever it is, and people said, "We don't like this." And that's what we're, that's what we're here to get fixed because it's, the intent of the ordinance is to make things better, certainly not to make things worse. I think, as you'll see in the presentation, that the, making the distinction between residential, existing properties and new development of commercial type properties will alleviate a lot of the concerns, at least that I have been hearing from phone calls and emails over the last couple of weeks. But I appreciate y'all from coming out. If you need a chair or something like that, we've got people in the back that can help. Even the front row is full, so we're doing, we've got great turnout. You just want me to turn it over to the mayor?
Mayor, would you like to?
Yeah. First off, thank you all for coming. I was talking to Ellen Packer before. This is how government works. And, you know, maybe you don't think that. I know there's going to be a lot of strong opinions, maybe on both sides of this issue of what riparian is and what we're trying to accomplish as a council and how we want to protect property rights. But when people get involved, you know, a lot of times there's issues that come up that we, you know, we don't get a lot of public input back on. I want you to know, most all, every one of us have been down to some of your properties and listened to what you've talked about and why, hey, the way that this is written currently is, would be a bad ordinance. And we've been down, we've, you know, gotten a ton of calls, phone calls and emails. And so rather than, you know, this was actually on our agenda to pass as an ordinance about a month ago. And I took it off because I felt like there was too many people that had strong opinions and we needed to listen as a council. And that's why we're here tonight is to hear more of your opinions, your concerns, so that we get this right. There's not anybody here that doesn't want to protect a stream. I know that. We have to figure out a way to do that without minimizing your property rights. We understand that. So we want to get this right and we're here to, I'm not going to take more time. We want to hear your opinions and we're grateful for you coming, especially for these young folks that want to learn how government works as well. So, and it's fun to see great faces and friends out there. So, anyway, thank you, Sean.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, thank you. I'm glad everybody's awake now. I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. This is a great turnout. To see the passion in our community and the concern within your hearts and the spaces around you, it's critical that we have these conversations. We work very hard to be as transparent as possible and this is one of the efforts to do so here in our city. For me, I'm passionate about Cottonwood Heights. I'm passionate about all of you, our neighbors, our community members. And I'm looking forward to this conversation. As the mayor stated, this is our opportunity to listen and that's what we want to do. We want to listen, but not only listen, we want to hear you. And it's important that you be open with us and we'll do the same. We've had, we have a great staff that has worked hard on this. We have others that have come in to consult on some of these issues. So know that the city is working really hard to do the best things possible, but we also need your input and your insights to be able to help us to accomplish our goals. So again, thank you very much for being here this evening and look forward to hearing from you.
Thanks, Sean. Our city manager, Tim Tingey, if you'd like to take over for your presentation and Mike's, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. So what I want to do real quickly, I'm going to turn the time over to Mike Johnson, but I want to talk just briefly about our process and what we're going to do tonight. This is a town hall meeting, so it's not an official city council meeting where business is conducted by the council moving along with decisions that are made. The process with the sleds ordinance has been going on for actually a number of years in this update. There's been public input processes. There's been a number of public meetings through the Planning Commission and the City Council. And this is part of the process to get additional input, which is very important. So tonight's meeting's not your typical city council meeting. It's a little bit different, but it's where it's a town hall, but it is very important. So what we're going to do is we're going to turn time over to Mike Johnson. He's going to present a very brief overview of the sleds ordinance. And then in, with all of the public input that's been received, including comments and discussion at our last city council meeting and previous council meetings, the direction was given by the city council and mayor to make modifications and propose modifications. You're going to see some of the proposed modifications tonight in Mike Johnson's presentation. Those modifications may answer a lot of your questions and that's great. If there are other questions, there'll be that opportunity as well. We have an agenda. If you don't have the agenda, there are some parameters that we're wanting to adhere to tonight. We'll do the presentation, but we are planning on having this meeting go till 8:30. If you do not get the opportunity to comment, then there's going to, there'll be opportunity to email myself or Mike Johnson. Our information is on this agenda. In addition to that, there's going to be plenty of other opportunity through the city council because this, once we, once again, I'm going to reiterate, is a process. No decisions will be made probably in the upcoming weeks, if not months, depending upon where we're at. So there'll be plenty of other opportunities for that. I want to just remind you that we're all part of Cottonwood Heights. We're all neighbors. We're individuals that live and work close to each other. So I'm hoping that we can be, have a good amount of decorum here. Don't make personal or belligerent comments. We're hoping everyone will be civil in this process as well. So what I'll do is turn the time over to Mike. Then we'll have the question and answer. I'm going to actually come down and I will have a microphone. If you have questions, you can raise your hand and I'm going to facilitate that question and answer period that we'll go through. So I'm going to turn the time over to Mike. Really appreciate the efforts. He's put in a lot of efforts, especially on these revisions. He is an exceptional, exceptional community economic development director and I'm so grateful he's part of the staff. So turn it over to Mike.
Let me make just one quick comment. There are revisions here. If for some reason one of the revisions doesn't quite work for you, that's certainly something that we would like to hear in the questions and comments after. We're hoping that we've got the bulk of it taken care of, but we're certainly not perfect at it. So, sorry, Mike.
Thank you. No problem. So my name is Mike Johnson. I'm going to just get right into it and be as brief as I can while still covering everything. I think everyone is here mainly for the riparian portion of this ordinance. Is that correct? Okay. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on anything else. I do want to give a brief background because you're going to hear some acronyms and words. And we've got two, we've got screens on both sides of the room. I know that might be tough in the lobby. If you do, there's some sign in sheets. If you provide your email, we'll send this and future updates directly to each of you. But please just, before you leave, sign in and provide your email address so we can do that. So SLED stands for Sensitive Lands Evaluation and Development Standards. It's an ordinance that the city has had for a number of years at this point, probably over 10 years since I've worked here for sure. And what it does is it provides requirements for development in certain sensitive areas of the city. And as Councilmember Bracken said, that's areas with steep slopes or fault lines or high groundwater, any number of different things. In that ordinance, these are the different standards or hazards that are regulated. In today's ordinance, before any change has been made or any update has been made, it does list riparian corridors and watersheds as a hazard. However, there are currently no, it references a place for standards that doesn't exist today, so they are not listed anywhere. However, they are classified as a hazard type. Riparian protection standards, this is a brief, simple definition of what we're talking about. It's an area that, that is basically an open waterway and its adjacent ground. There have been questions on what this includes. Primarily, this is, in Cottonwood Heights, this is the East Jordan Canal, Big Cottonwood Creek and Little Cottonwood Creek, to an extent, Deff Smith Creek and some of the other ones. This does not irrigation ditches. So when we talk about riparian areas, it's typically open waterways and the land surrounding it. That's what that means. I'm going to just quickly run through this. And again, I will email this out to anybody that wants this and I'm happy to provide this. This is how these standards were developed from a staff perspective. When we were directed by the council in 2019, a council of a different makeup than today to update the city's sensitive lands ordinance, because riparian standards were referenced in there, we attempted to prepare regulations for that hazard. What we did is we took standard practices for riparian management from local and other western ordinances. We added onto that best management practices from local regulatory agencies like Salt Lake County and their flood control division, Salt Lake City Public Utilities, FEMA, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Forest Service, organizations like that. And then we tried to tailor that to Cottonwood Heights' approach to other sensitive lands hazards like fault lines and steep slopes and everything we do when we review development in those areas. And that's where this ordinance came from. I can go into way more detail, but I'm not going to do it here. But that's basically, the approach results in this, this concept of as you get closer to the top of a bank of a riparian area or an open waterway, development activity is typically regulated a little more strictly. And then as you get further away from that, that top of bank area, the regulations get less strict and in some cases, you know, completely non-existent. So that's the idea. That's the approach. What I want to talk about now is based on the council direction and the public feedback that has been provided dating back to the Planning Commission part of this process up to today, including public comments that were received today. Staff will be working on an updated draft that recommends some updates in response to these concerns. The draft is not ready yet. It's going to take some time. But again, sign in and we'll email status updates on that as they become available. So this is generally the direction that this is going to go. We're going to look at amending the buffer areas and the setbacks in those areas, and I'll get into that in just a minute. We are going to amend the draft so that maintenance-related standards or provisions become recommendations instead of requirements. And that's where we've heard things like tree maintenance has been a concern, fertilizer application, things like that. Your standard use of your property, we will leave some recommendations in the ordinance, but they will be just recommendations and not requirements like, like some of them are today. Elimination of additional regulatory steps if review is already required by another agency. A lot of the things that we'll see is going to require Salt Lake County flood control permit. If and when that's the case, what the new ordinance will say is, hey, just provide the city a copy of that flood control permit and you're good to go. And then again, this will be further tailored to more specifically focus on new development activity requirements. And of the new development activity requirements, most strictly on new commercial or commercial grade development that we see, not so much existing today, but that could exist or be applied for in the future. So I'm going to go into that a little bit. And if this gets confusing, I'm happy to answer questions off to the side or after. So right now, as it exists, the ordinance... I do have a graphic here. Thanks, Doug. So right now, in today's draft ordinance, this proposes certain riparian setback zones based on the zoning designation of the property. If you're in a larger lot zone or a commercial zone, the area, the setback from the top of bank is a little greater. If you're in a smaller zone, that setback decreases. What we're going to do in a revised draft is ensure that any single-family use, regardless of lot size, is in that smaller, that smaller riparian area with the 20, today it's 25 feet development restrictions. We're modifying that to 20 feet. And then commercial uses like our regional commercial zone, our mixed-use development, our office development zones, things like that. Again, that don't really exist today, but could in the future. Those will be subject to those greater setback restrictions. So any single-family, regardless of zoning or lot size, is going to be that smaller setback area. In addition to that, in that smaller area, the ordinance right now, Area A, which is the area closest to the top of the bank and the most restrictive, is going to be decreased from 25 feet down to 20. 20 feet was chosen because 20 is the same exact requirement that Salt Lake County flood control has had in place forever. Not forever, but for a long time. They will say right now, you cannot put a structure within 20 feet of the top of the bank if you go through their flood control permit process. We will be updating our ordinance in that smaller setback area to match the county standard that exists. And then today, there are some restrictions of developing in the areas beyond that initial close area. Again, for single-family residential, that will be removed. So it's a 20-foot minimum setback from top of bank and that's it, unless your county flood control permit requires more. And then in the larger setback area, commercial development will still be subject to review even as you get beyond that 50-foot area. Maintenance use standards, again, as I said, these will become recommendations rather than requirements. The list is not inclusive. That's on the presentation here, but an example. So that would include things like fertilizer application, tree maintenance and removal, landscaping within that close area to the top of the bank, yard grading, erosion control, stabilization, flood control work, et cetera. Again, notice the asterisks on the slide here. This does not preclude you from having to get a permit from Salt Lake County Flood Control or FEMA or whoever else, other regulatory agencies that would normally review these things anyways. This just doesn't add any additional city requirements to those outside standards that already exist. That said, if you need a building permit, if you're building a retaining wall and it's a certain height, that still needs a building permit. You still have to come through that process. It's just nothing in addition. So no additional city permitting necessary for maintenance work. What we will be recommending though is that if a permit is required for certain activity, that you provide a copy of that permit to the city and you're good to go. New development standards recommendations that will come forward. This will still include proposed regulations for new development. That's things like new structures, primary structures, homes, businesses, buildings, that kind of thing. Accessory structures as well, sheds and decks and garages and things like that. Retaining walls. More substantial review during a rezone or a major subdivision of property where you're doing substantially more development activity than what's there today. If you have to go through those procedures, the review standard will be a little more strict as it is today. Things like new animal enclosures. We heard very clearly from Salt Lake County that those pose major water quality issues, so we will still be proposing that no new animal pens or enclosure should be within that really close area to the top of the bank. And then parking lots, which is in today's current ordinance and will likely remain in there. Here's some differences though. Single-family and low-density development, again, that setback, that no build or that restricted building setback is being reduced to 20 feet and then no limitations in the next area, so 20 to 50 feet away from the top of the bank. Again, this matches exactly what Salt Lake County flood control is going to require anyways. Commercial or high-density development still would be subject, this is new development, would still be subject to a 50-foot minimum setback. And then even in that 50 to 75-foot zone, that would be subject to review by the city's development review committee. There will be things for trees and vegetation that we will be recommending that as part of major commercial development, rezones, conditional use permits, bigger development projects, changes of uses, things like that, that as part of that review process, an inventory of existing vegetation is done and protection plans are put in place to the greatest extent possible. That will not apply, however, to new single-family or two-family construction. So single-family is, again, will be recommendations, but not requirements to do any of this. The other thing we heard from Salt Lake County is that debris storage and debris getting into the creek is one of the primary causes of damage that they see. So they strongly recommended that no, no storage of wood or debris or anything like that be located in proximity to the creek because they see, that causes them issues every single year. So there will be some language recommending that as well. And again, all development near the creek would still require any applicable permit from outside agencies. So just to summarize this, the direction this is going is that these strict development standards will apply to commercial redevelopment, rezones, major subdivisions of property and things like that. But single-family development, while the ordinance will include recommendations and best practices for how you can take care of your property to enhance that riparian area, there will be no requirements outside of what's already required today either by the city or the county or other entities. So that is a change from what has been seen and discussed previously and some information that's been put out. So single-family residential will essentially be allowed to continue exactly as it is today, albeit with recommendations. A 20-foot setback requirement that matches the county's already existing requirement. There have been some questions on modifying or expanding structures that might already be closer than 20 feet to the top of the bank area. There is language proposed for this. There's also language already in city code. We see this done for other reasons throughout the city multiple times per year. Basically, there will be language saying, hey, you can go through a procedure and application process and as long as you're not expanding your structure even closer to the waterway. Say you're expanding to the front of the house, you're adding height, you're expanding sideways, just not closer to the creek, then that's okay. You just go through an application process. And again, we've seen that utilized in many other areas of the city consistently. Reconstruction of buildings or homes that are damaged involuntarily by things like fires, floods, other things like that, that's allowed. That's allowed by state code. You can rebuild in the same location. You can repair any damage that's caused that isn't done voluntarily. There's no change being proposed there. And then there's a reasonable use exception in this ordinance as well. On a case-by-case basis, owners may request exceptions if the standards in place would otherwise prohibit reasonable development. This is kind of a catch-all in addition to the changes that are already being made, in addition to the expansion provisions here, that if there's a very unique property that otherwise doesn't seem possible to build, you can make this application and have that approved as well. So these are pretty drastic changes from the ordinance that's already been seen and I'm hoping it covers a lot of the concerns and comments that have been out there. Certainly some of the information that was on your flyer regarding fertilizer usage and tree maintenance, that's being taken care of. That was already in the works and has been discussed by the council already. But again, the maintenance aspects of this will all be voluntary and recommendation-based standards rather than requirements. And then we're reconfiguring any single-family development or redevelopment to just fall in line with existing city ordinance procedures, county flood control procedures, and then the most restrictive standards will apply to that commercial redevelopment of areas of the city where commercial probably doesn't exist today. Okay, that's, hopefully that was quick enough.
Tim, is there anything that you would like to say next? Or I guess the comment? Comment period, if, if you could hand that around. We do have, we do have a mic right here, if you'd like to stand here, or Tim, if you'd be, think it'd be better, you could just be Phil Donahue and go around and hand him the mic.
Yeah, what I'll do is, I'll go around, you, I, I have a couple of individuals have already indicated that they wanted to ask questions or comment. So I'm going to call on them first and then if you have questions or comments, raise your hand. We're going to keep it fairly limited. If you have comments, we'll time you, nothing more than three minutes, and then we need to move on to the next person. Once again, as we've already stated, if you didn't get, don't get timed tonight, there's going to be plenty of other opportunities to provide comment. And you can email Mike Johnson or myself or any of the council members as well. So I think the first one is Alan Fletcher. Where's Alan at? Okay. And you can also come up to the microphone if you'd like, you don't have to have this. So remember, three minutes and then we need to move on.
Three minutes, I've been timed before at this. So, Mayor, we're glad to be here tonight. I'm here kind of representing the Old Mill Estates Homeowners Association. Over the last, probably the last 12 months, either myself or other representatives from our homeowners, a group have attended a number of these meetings and some of the planning meetings and have watched this, watched this process as it's moved along. We've been impressed by the, by the group that, that has put together this, the, the proposal that's in front of the, the city council. We've been imposed, been impressed by the, the time and effort that's gone into it. Think they've done an excellent job in, in bringing together all of the, the, not only the, the scientific information, but also the, the disparate concerns of the community. We think they've done a good job with it and, and we're supportive of, of what they've put together with these recent changes to reflect some of the concerns of the community. We're by and large very supportive of it. And we think that, that the council's done a good job in addressing some of the concerns. And, and, and we think that, that this is something that should be given serious consideration. And, and with the, the changes that have been proposed, it's something that will benefit not only the, the community today, but the community going forward. So, so we're very supportive and, and speaking as, as an organization of some 88 homeowners, we think this would be an important part of Cottonwood Heights moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks Alan.
David, David Packer? I'm somewhat disarmed because many of my concerns have been addressed, which is a very good thing, but not everything. And I also would like to express that I have great sympathy for the mayor and council. I've served on a city council and I know that it's, the work that you do is a continual trade-off between usually good and important issues. And this is an important issue and there are good issues on both sides of it. I did email a letter to Mr. Tingey earlier that he's distributed to you. Please take into account that that was written before I knew about all of the concessions that have been made, the modifications. And also as a preface, the, some of the understandings I've taken to an extreme and seemed to be polarized. And I found in my service in city and county and state commissions and boards that it served me well to be able to take language and extrapolate it to the extreme and see where it's, see where it lands as a sanity check on it. And, because that's where it will end up, in somebody's mind and somebody doing something. So even though it's not, wouldn't expect things to happen, they, they often do. If not on this watch, on somebody else's watch as, as time goes forward. I'm concerned about the great overreach into public property rights, personal rights. And I think much of that's been addressed. I'm very concerned about the setbacks primarily where the things that have been addressed there do a great deal for alleviating my concerns. I own a open vacant lot and my ability to do with, with that lot that I, what I would like to do, the way it was written before would have a tremendous detrimental effect on the value of that lot. And of course, that detrimental effect represents a taking, just as much as a condemnation would be a taking. And I think the council and the mayor and the staff have, have recognized that and we appreciate that. But I'm concerned, one thing, I'll be anxious to now get the revised ordinance and review that in detail and you'll probably hear from me again. But one item that still concerns me is the, the reasonable use exception. And as I've read the ordinance about the criteria for reasonable use, that would allow staff and the review to do just about anything they would like to do so far as either approving or disapproving. So if there were a personal agenda or a political or a environmental agenda at play, then reasonable use is all in the eyes of the beholder. So I would suggest reviewing that very carefully. But again, I appreciate the, the changes that have been made and the work that you've all done. And we'll be anxious to get the revised draft and take a look at it again. Thank you.
No, Dave, if I, if I might, I know you write well. I read your.
Oh, thank you.
I, I read what you wrote and I was like, well, I'm, I'm hoping that he's here tonight and he'll see what efforts we've made. I wouldn't disagree with that statement on reasonable use, that can be very hard to define. I know you can write well and speak well. If you've got suggestions on what, how, how to work that, I, I think they'd be, they'd be, they'd be welcomed.
That's fair.
It, it's, it's, it is challenging.
It is. It is. And that's a fair, I'll take that.
I'm not going to ask everybody to write the answer to a question you might have. But I know in this case.
Well, you shouldn't, they deserve it too.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question real quick to Mike. Mike, would the, the reasonable use exception need approval from planning commission or council?
Right now it says DRC, that could change. That could be the, you know, our, the appeals officer who deals with the non-conforming use expansions, it could be planning commission. It, it really is an administrative thing, so it should be one of those administrative bodies rather than the council. But it could, I mean, it could go to planning commission and public meetings and, and go through that, that would be fine.
And that is a legitimate concern because we need to have those stop measures so that we don't have something be an agenda item for a group. Like you say, it will fluctuate over the years of who's in there and what motivation they have.
Reasonable is reasonable until somebody else.
Then it's unreasonable.
Looks at it and says, but that's not reasonable. So, you're right, some definition would be good.
Thanks for pointing that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Wade Budge and then Alan Packer, and we'll keep moving forward. And I am, I am timing you three minutes. Letting you know, you're hearing.
Go ahead, hold, hold me to the three minutes. Appreciate it. Honorable mayor, honorable council members, staff, thank you very much. My name is Wade Budge. I'm a land use lawyer representing a couple of property owners. I also happen to, I've grown up on Little Cottonwood Creek. And so I'm glad this ordinance is not going to pass because what I did as a teenager would have been an offense, undoubtedly. I cut down a tree or two.
Statute of limitations Wade.
Yes, indeed, indeed. Thank you, I checked before I came. Allow me to say this, I am very pleased to hear what staff has worked on. You have a good, capable staff, they are good at what they do, and I'm happy to hear that the revisions have been proposed in the way that they were proposed. I wanted to just note a few comments, which maybe the draft will resolve or address, but I wanted to identify them. One of the things that we need to understand is when you're dealing with property rights in this state, it's very important that we take into account expectations. Because when people purchase land, they have certain expectations. And a lot of times, as Mr. Packer indicated, it might be a vacant parcel, but there's an expectation to build. And we need to make sure that those expectations can be met. One of the things that we have noted has worked in other jurisdictions, including neighboring Salt Lake City and Holiday, is to allow for the redevelopment and expansion. So when Mr. Johnson indicated that expansion will be allowed, it'll be important that those provisions are clear and are of use to the property owner so that they can, if they have a home that is aging, still make use of that property by removing that home and replacing it with another home and not having to somehow artificially limit the size of that home beyond what would be typical for the neighborhood. One of the things that was of concern when we reviewed the proposed ordinance was a limitation on the ground floor level of being 2,000 square feet. While that may seem fine in some subdivisions, many of the lots that border Little Cottonwood Creek are rather large. And where you can't build a basement because you have high water table, limiting your area to 2,000 square feet may be a problem. So I would, I would suggest that that be evaluated. I briefly wanted to just touch on two or three other items. One is that when you consider standards, as was indicated by council member Bracken, it is important to put as much objectivity, if you will, in terms of what are the criteria that are being implied in those standards. That is good for everyone. It builds predictability. So if there's a measurable standard, that's the one that's appropriate. Under state law, if there's an ambiguity or a confusion or a subjectivity, it's always construed in favor of the landowner, which is good. But what we want to do is avoid the prospect of contention or dispute. And by putting more objective standards in there, that benefits all of us. The other thing I would say is that there are some certain elements that are outside of the riparian area that should be looked at. One is the architectural control provision. Two years ago, the legislature passed what is now known as section 534 of the state statute of Bludma. And a review to make sure that that section on architectural control conforms with that state statute would be good. Because again, the, the idea is to build predictability and confidence in the, in the zoning. With those comments, I'll conclude to say thank you for the efforts and we would appreciate the opportunity to review the draft when it comes out and provide further comment.
Thanks Wade.
Thanks Wade.
Thank you, appreciate you all.
Well, I, I don't know, I think probably Mike, with the 2,000 square, the, when I read it, and I think that this probably has gone away for residential type things.
Correct.
But that was only what could be in the B-zone, but you could have another 2,000 feet out in the, I guess that would be the C-zone.
That's the way we read it too, council member. And the only reason I raised the comment is if you happen to have a lot that was narrower and that could be.
And that, that, that's something we need to make sure we, we're covered.
Thank you, council member.
And I hope on the 534 or whatever it said.
You have great counsel.
I assume that he knows what that is.
As does, as does your counsel, your ci, your city attorney, he's very good as well. So we can work with both of them on that. Thank you.
Wade, thanks for bringing that up because we do have some lots that literally parallel the creek.
Yeah.
And I had council Bracken go down and look at those. And they are unusual lots, they can be an acre, but they're only not very many feet.
Yeah.
So some of the ordinance as proposed were affecting every part of their property.
Right.
And so that's not, you know, that's not normal in most of the lots. A lot of them have a lot of frontage or the rear yards, it's not an issue. But thanks for bringing that up. And Mike, if that's another item that we might want to look at.
The 2,000-foot portion, especially in the single family portion will be, it, it's just going to be replaced with a 20-foot top of bank setback.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate that. And then just last, you might want to focus on the word water course, there is a lot of water in this area. And I recognize what you said in your presentation about it being confined to the ditch and to the two main perennial streams, but, and maybe some ephemeral, but we wouldn't want to create confusion relative to those ditches that we all know. Thank you.
And Wade, I just want to mention, that creek does change direction a little bit. What your father gains.
Yeah.
Gary Larson loses.
I know.
And, and it's just, it's been a funny joke, but your, your dad is very appreciative to Gary. But it is, it is a variable and a movable object. And so we go from creek edge and that, that is variable.
You're exactly right, councilman.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And Doug, he said to not be offensive, don't call people's land shapes funny.
Thank you for the time to speak and thank you for your service. We know it's, it's challenging sometimes. And as we talk before, Mayor, I, I really believe that this dialogue is important and critical. And we've seen the value of that taking place in, in what's being proposed and what's changing. Now, not knowing what those are, I'll mention a couple of things that remain on my interest list. I served as chairman of the Little Cottonwood Creek Valley Community Council for many years, working with Sandy and with the county. And one of the things that I learned fairly quickly was that words count. And so I've read the definitions and looked at the implications of those. And it's how somebody in the future will interpret that language that can be very critical in how and what we end up with. And so would appreciate that as a priority. I know on ditches, Wade mentioned the ditches and water courses. EPA has been trying to regulate small streams in other areas of the state, which would include Richards Ditch and some of the other things. So those are things to be looked at. One of the concerns I had, as I read through it, is what I would classify as assumptions at the base level of putting this together, that there was some assumptions that were poor and misaligned with the values of the community, prioritizing environmental issues over property rights. And you're already sensitive to that. As we move forward, I came to the conclusion, I wasn't sure if we could adjust or would need to start over, given the definitions, given the way it was woven in. And so that, in my mind, is, is still a potential issue. As, as we look at changes, a part of my property value will be established by who in the future will be willing to buy it. And so restricting how future owners might look at the property is part of retention of value so that it doesn't take money out of my bank account or my property account to be able to accomplish that. The other thing I would suggest you look at is throughout, there are reference to goals for the riparian corridor, for priorities for recreation. And I think being sensitive to the attempt to put paths in our backyards, through our, our sand piles, through our barbecues, through our outbuildings that were part of the overall master plan before, it, it raised the attention and focus on perhaps well-meaning but misguided individuals or outside groups that are influencing the process. I think as I've listened, some of those concerns are being recognized and will be balanced out so that there is equal value on that. So thank you for taking the time to listen to these concerns, you're already acting on them, Mike. Thank you for doing that and helping us find a balance with all these things. Thank you.
Thanks Alan.
Can I ask a question? Not for you specifically, but you bring up a good point. And I don't know if this is the place, but Tim, maybe when the, the trail fiasco happened, is there a way possibly through this or something else to codify the decision that we made that the trail, that Little Cottonwood Creek at least should be preserved the way that it is because there are few places like that? I'm just kicking that out for consideration in the future. It might be nice to actually have something a little bit more than we just took it out and somebody else might bring it up.
Well, the council voted to approve the parks, trails and open space master plan, which had that trail moved.
Right.
And that was an official ordinance vote, an official document now.
That was my understanding as well.
I think that's a good question because in another part of the SLEDs document up towards the front, I think I remember it being kind of in the definitions, there is references to trails on slopes. Now, the word slopes is also used to describe creek banks. And it raises the concern there. It identifies in that paragraph some criteria for approval to put a path in, but it does not include ever a requirement to talk to the property owner. It just says on the top or the bottom of residential property, a path can be established. And I, I think those are the kind of things that riddle the document and create the concern.
Those are the names I had. So if you have questions or comments, raise your hand and you can, I can hand you this or if you want to come up.
I'd just like to reiterate what the others have said, that this is a much improved version compared to what I've looked at in the past. And so I commend you for that. One potential minor issue is that it talks about fencing.
One potential minor issue is that it talks about fencing, and in terms of that you cannot construct fences that could keep animals from going through them, which I think would also mean that you couldn't construct a fence that would keep people from going through it. And if we've got backyards that are going down by the stream, it would be very good that we're not restricted in what kind of a fence we can put up there for the safety and security of our backyard and our property. And I think most of the other things have been said, and I appreciate your efforts.
What was your name?
Oh, I'm Mark Johnson.
Mark Johnson.
Thanks, Mark.
Got one right back here.
My name's Dale Harris, and I'm glad, not so sure I'm glad to be here. It kind of feels like déjà vu, but given the trail reference. But I'm pleased to see that you're willing to listen and respond to some of the issues that I have. I guess I'd just make a comment. I asked this to Mike. He didn't really reply yet. But the question I had is, you know, how much land are we actually putting under a new ordinance? So I spent the time and went to Google Earth, and I plotted out the entire grid and did the math. It's about 120 acres. So to put perspective on that, that was at the 150 -- no, that was an average, an average of 125 and 150. To put that in perspective, Crestwood Park is about 58 acres. So the initial proposal, and maybe it still persists to this day, today, put under ordinance 120 acres of non-public, some of it is Crestwood Park, that includes Crestwood Park. That's a huge chunk of land. I think if you were to bring a proposal forward in this city to say, we're putting a new ordinance on two Crestwood Parks, you'd have a huge response. And so I think you need to understand, when you start to think through these things, do the math. Know how much land you're actually dealing with. It's a sizable chunk, okay? The next thing is, I have some questions about the purposes, and I think that's been spoken through. I read this ordinance, this list of purposes, and they sound wonderful in a way. But I have not seen any data that those are already not doing well, and that this new ordinance would prove to meet them. And so I'm a very data-driven person. If you're going to propose a huge ordinance, you need to supply data that actually show, one, our water quality isn't doing well. Two, it's not as beautiful as we like. I mean, go through the whole list, provide a justification, don't just accept it as fact. And then also tell us, this is how the ordinance will make it better. I haven't seen that anywhere. So I think before you put private property under heavy new ordinance, the initial view of it was burdensome, both financially, by limitations, by having to go in front of the review committee, higher experts. It was a very burdensome initial. In order to justify that, that you're going to put that much land under an ordinance, you better support your purposes. And I'd like to see that in a new document. I haven't heard that discussed.
Thanks, Dale.
I'm Howard Norton. I've been a resident here for over 34 years, and I'm also a board member and president of Richard Irrigation Company. One of the things that just became a great concern within the last week on this is it does talk about waterways in it. And technically, the federal government looks at Richard's irrigation ditch running just north of Creek Road as a waterway. Unless it's specifically exempted out of this proposal, there's some irrigation ditches that are in Cottonwood Heights that technically would fall under this, and would more than double the number of properties that you've already got running along the creek. If somebody later on declared that as, well, that's a waterway, and so it fits that ditch. So they need to specifically be dealt with in the proposal, and not declared, oh, that's not part of the waterway. The federal government looks at it as a waterway.
I can clarify real quick. Yeah, it's not in a draft yet, but after some discussions with a group of residents, we will be adding language that specifically accepts irrigation ditches from this ordinance applying. So that's already in the works. That's planned.
And obviously, Richard is piped now. Years ago, it was not piped, but it goes back to the pioneer times of Richards.
Well, it's used regularly, every year.
Oh, no. I know it's -- yeah, I use it myself, Howard. I just wanted to make it clear. It used to be above ground. It is no longer. So if we can get clarification on that, Mike.
Well, no, there is an above-ground ditch.
A little bit, yeah.
Yes, and it has water in it every year.
Especially up by the golf course, we have the retention pond there as well.
And there's also the surplus ditch going from the box for Richard's irrigation down back to the creek again, that is an open waterway. So anything that pertains to the irrigation ditches, which are controlled by the state anyway, they need to be exempted from this ordinance.
And we're already concerned about that, Mike, because the city would love to take that water. And so we, well.
Or you mean the other cities?
Salt Lake City, sorry. I need to clarify.
And the state now also.
The state, yes, the state. The state would love that water. And if you want to be upset about your property rights, wait till you get into water rights.
And thank you for all of your service, and especially the police force. Great, safe city again.
Thanks, Alan.
Okay, we have two over here.
Hello, and is your name? Spike, this may be for you.
Can you state your name, just so we'll know?
Emily Ann Ardris. I live right on Creek Road. Mr. Bracken and I had a conversation a few weeks ago. So I have a house that, and I might be an anomaly, I don't know, there might be others here that are like this, but my house, my driveway literally is on an embankment. I'm probably 20 feet up, but I'm not 20 feet away, and we filed a permit to build a garage. I was told a couple of years ago we could, but we were the lucky recipient of the great flood of 2019, so we put that on hold, and then found out about this ordinance. So we hustled and put that permit in. Sounds like we're not going to be allowed to do it unless you guys measure up and out. I mean, is that, are you guys going to allow for any kind of exception to that? I mean, there's already a driveway there. It's far enough away from the creek if you look up. What, I mean, are you guys, is that a hard, fast roll? It's.
Few things. Applications, this ordinance doesn't exist today. It's not codified. But there's a few things at play here. One is Salt Lake County flood control is going to be involved in the review process of anything you're doing. They may restrict that. We don't have a riparian ordinance. It's listed as a hazard, but we don't have these standards in place today. If they were, there are these exceptions, where if you're expanding something that's already non-conforming, you can apply and go through that. That being said, if you've applied and already have an application pending, the ordinance that's in place today, which is not this, is going to apply. But as I've said, even with the revised standards, we're just matching basically county flood control standards for residential now. So you'll be routed through their review anyways, and they may restrict beyond what the city would.
And if I timestamped it already, it's.
Well, and I should say, applying two years ago versus today, there's no difference in city code or process.
Okay, but I applied yesterday, so it's filed with the city, Salt Lake County, the flood people.
Yeah, your application is in.
And you've made that timestamped, okay.
And Emily, maybe hang after. I did get the other data we talked about, about speeds. I didn't bring it with me, though. Did I call your name wrong? I'm sorry. I heard it wrong then. I apologize.
Steve Carlston. A couple of things I've heard tonight is, there seems to be a bit of a disconnect between the concerns of the people that live near Little Cottonwood Creek versus Big Cottonwood. Maybe that's something that the commission could better define. Also, maybe a grandfather clause would make a lot of sense. As a lifelong resident of this area, I've watched a lot of things change, a lot of things develop. I think my high school track coach may have been a resident of the Hibs. So just saying, cities changed a lot. But I attend a lot of economic development forums throughout the state. Couple of weeks ago, one down in St. George. And two things I am consistently hearing from city, county, state officials, no matter where we are, is there are really two hot buttons right now. One seems to be the need for housing. One seems to be for, in particular, high-density housing and low-income housing. And the second is that as the city, county, and state grow, sorry, water and water rights, water access, and limitations of water conservation are becoming a bigger and bigger issue. And my concern, one thing I'd ask you to consider, is that as the city sees development and redevelopment, there are risks that those two dynamics, which are two of the most important things right now going on throughout the state on all levels, can be at odds. And when those are at odds, one thing I'd ask you to consider is what we mentioned in the presentation over and over, water quality, water control, and the importance of water, because as that becomes such a valuable resource and valuable commodity, especially as the city and the state continue to grow, water will become a limiting factor. And what that essentially means is the risk of high-density footprints, heavy footprints along those waterways, and the risk of damage to those waterways because of those high-density footprints can create a material impact. Once something is done, clearly it can't be undone. And so one thing I'd ask the committee to consider is to make sure that anything that's developed, redeveloped, anything that's done in the city takes heavy consideration on the risk to those waterways, and that we protect that water for us, for our community, and really for the future of all of us in this valley. Thank you.
My name is John Rutter. I've lived on Little Cottonwood Creek for some 45 years now. We have a home down there. Kind of an odd-shaped lot, kind of a butterfly-shaped lot. And Scott and Doug have both been there, visited that. It's kind of unique. But over the years, we've had, we've lived through the floods of '84, and saw the community help that came from religious organizations and the government, and just people helping out to help shore up the banks. And it's worked out very well for us. And I think overall, in the years that I've lived there, the owners, the property owners, have done a wonderful job of maintaining the creek as the way we would like it to be maintained, and to see how it is done. And I propose and say to the planning commission and others, I think that we really don't need any more restrictions on our property and the land and the creek. We've done a very good job of that. I am a little bit concerned about the situation with the planning commission providing this information and almost passed. That scared me a little bit. And apparently it came down the wire. And I commend all of you on the council for following up on our, with your responsibilities as our elected leaders, to look at that and adjust that. But is there some way that that could have passed that we would not have had input as landowners and property owners? That worries me. Could you address that? Is there another way to work with the planning commission that maybe we don't have to get to the edge?
So.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I can address notification. So then that's a big issue, and I know we've heard from multiple people that have been worried about that. When I first became mayor, the first newsletter article that I wrote, and I know every one of you read it, right? It said, you know, one of the things I wrote about is, we actually have the ability for you to sign up to get an email and receive every agenda item for the planning commission, for the council, to stay informed for what is happening in the city. And so I know that that's hard. You're going to get an email, and you're not going to look at every one, but hopefully your neighbor will. And so I would encourage you to go on to our website, if you're not there already, and sign up for what you want to be informed of, whether it's what happens in our council meetings, planning commission, et cetera. And so, you know, we can also try to do a better job. We've received some ideas, and some of them I think that we can work on. But hopefully that answers a little bit of what you were talking about.
John, your concerns are our concerns. The planning commission gives us recommendations, and there are seven individuals that are on that and an alternate. And so we need to be very careful about vetting what they have approved, because there's a lot of leeway in between what they think is right and acceptable. And then it has to come down to the ultimate, the legislative, what we are, to be able to prove that. Obviously, it goes through, you know, planning and different entities like that. And so we rely on staff, but we need to be very tied into that. And that's where, even as a community, we need to try to be watching things. I know it's difficult to do that in a busy life, but to watch more of that. And a lot of that is on us, and we'll try to be very careful about watching those things before they get too far down the road. But that's a very good point. Thank you.
We should always work to make those clear as possible. I mean, you might not get this from SLEDs, but there are certainly people who figured it out and made sure that you all knew. So, you know, that's the other way. But I've been receiving those emails for years.
My name is Ed Harnaker. I live on Larita Way, right on the side of the house. Been there for a little over 30 years. Appreciate everything that Cottonwood Heights has done, the city, like that presentation and very much the point. With respect to living there for 30-some years, in the last couple of years, two things have arisen that would impact my property. The first was the bright idea to put trails through our backyards. The second is this water issue. I love the creek, and we certainly want to take care of it. But I don't think there's that many people that really live within the districts or which council member might be responsible for. A letter, and we try to, you know, we read your paper, and we read what the mayor writes and that sort of thing. But when somebody is considering figuring out a way to take a significant part of my property, I think a letter addressed to me, and that's readily available on the plot maps, would very much be appreciated, rather than have Dave Berry come to my door and say, did you hear about this? And I said, no, I didn't hear about it. So we'll do all we can to stay in touch with what you're doing, but I think an occasional letter, when it affects my property, would very much be appreciated. And while we're on that fact, getting an email of the draft revision, if you live along the creek, would be a good thing as well. So I'd be willing to sign up and provide my email address, but I would greatly appreciate it if it was tagged to the events, and there was a piece of correspondence coming to me, rather than me trying to figure out what the city is doing. Thank you.
So again, for this, please put your email down back there. Everyone will get an email anytime there's anything related to this ordinance, whether it's a new draft, this presentation tonight, council meeting discussions, just write your information down.
And in reference to that, just really quick before the next comment, is now we have a representative in Mike Smith that lives on the creek. And so I think this is going to help. We haven't had representation down in our valley, so I think that's a very important part of it, and the emails, so.
On the planning commission.
What did I say?
You just, you didn't.
Oh, say, he's on the planning commission, and we have a rep, Sue Reiser was before him, but Mike Smith, sitting next to, he backs right up against the creek.
You live down in the valley, too.
I'm in the valley, but I'm not one of those, you know, those creekside people. But thanks for bringing that up. And the communication, because years ago, anything within 300 feet of your property, you seem like you used to get a letter for that. And so we're going to make great efforts to make that happen. Thanks.
My name is Kathy Mills, and I'm actually more familiar with the Big Cottonwood Creek water. water than the Little Cottonwood Creek. And I do appreciate all of those current homeowners and their concerns. The part that we see is that there's a lot of undeveloped land. And we do have concerns of what will go there and how to take care of that, and how to plan for that future development over there. And so, I appreciate everything that you've done for this ordinance, and I think it addresses a lot of our concerns also that go over for that future development that we see over there. So, please take that into consideration. I'm so glad I'm not a lawyer that have to word Smith, all of this. That just is, would drive me crazy. So, I appreciate that. But know that there's another side of this, of future development, and how to plan around that, and plan for that, and still protect our water.
And that's a good note to some of the younger people here. Doesn't matter what you're planning to do for your future career, writing and speaking well is a valuable asset, because it's not easy.
And Big Cottonwood Creek is a different animal a little bit, but it is huge, because we're worried and, well, we're concerned about development that will take place there in the Old Mill area, all the way up through, right almost to the mouth of Cottonwood Canyon. Look at that, is definitely on our radar, as that will be an issue in the coming years.
I think that's why the, there's the distinction between new development and existing. Little Cottonwood Creek is pretty well filled up with what's there. There'll be a little bit, but there are some fairly good-sized parcels on Big Cottonwood Creek that will be developed in the future.
I just wanted to say an amen to Ed here. I'm also on La Rita Way. My name's Mark McDonald, and I, too, wouldn't have even heard about this if not for Dave Barry, our neighbor. But my question is, is like Ed had, is my wife and I, to get people to come to this meeting, because I've come to these meetings in the past, and there's been maybe 15 people or 20 people. And so, we were thinking, my wife and I were thinking of maybe passing out some literature to these creek owners so that they would show up, you know, to this meeting. And of course, I get on my door. I don't know how many people came here tonight because of this, but the only reason that maybe they came is the Board of Realtors said Cottonwood Heights is attempting to take away your property rights. And I'm sure that was an alarm to everybody that lives on the creek. But my wife and I, like Ed had mentioned, we were going around counting how many homes we would have to do to make something like this, to put on people's doors, so that they would be aware that they're going to lose a lot of their property rights. And we counted in our area, down to probably about, let's see, it would be 13th East, all the way up past our house, up to about Willow Creek, like 60 homes, you know, that were maybe on the creek. And so, I'm like Ed, it's like, why can't the, if this was affecting my property rights and nobody else in Cottonwood Heights, why didn't they have a list of names of those property owners on the creek? And why didn't they let us know that they were going to have a meeting and be talking about these property rights? You know, again, I wouldn't have known about them if Dave Barry hadn't alerted me. And how many people saw that this meeting was on tonight? I looked on your website, there's nothing about this meeting here tonight. There's two other meetings you listed. One was on the 7th, which is past, and then there's some meeting that's coming up on the 17th. This meeting should have been on your website, and it wasn't in this Cottonwood Heights, you know, Between the Canyons magazine. If anything, the council should learn from it, is they should respect people and for their opinions, particularly when you're taking away their property rights.
Just in defense of our city, I called this meeting as soon as I, some of the primary people could be here. Just you'll know, at least in my area, I've been on the phone for about three weeks. I don't know how many people I've talked to personally, maybe you could raise your hands, but I've been in touch with many more people that have not been here, but I think your point is valid, that we need to make certain that this is something that, and this is a town hall meeting, that I probably hit my district even harder. And Scott, I don't know, I know you've been on the phone a lot with your district, but we feel bad that those people that, and thank goodness, you know, Dave Barry did sound that alarm. And I think it's very helpful to have residents speak about this, but we will do, see what we can do to make certain that you are informed, because we really love what we're seeing here tonight, and we want to continue to see it on these important subjects.
I mean, I can address quickly, the newsletter usually gets done about, the newsletter that you were holding was done a month ago. This meeting was not planned then. I know that there were social media notifications about this meeting, that one. That doesn't, that gets printed in the middle of January. I know it was on the social media, I didn't search the thing, but I, I'm just telling you why it would not be in there if it wasn't on the web. That's certainly something that needs to be worked on.
That was my art concern.
Well, while the, I mean, I will admit to, the flyer was, or the door hanger was probably a bit, you know, it was designed to get a reaction, it certainly did. But hopefully, I'm hoping that we're getting through the messes that, we're not trying to take property rights or further restrict what's been going on. Part of the problem with this is, a lot of people, they haven't even known where to go, who you have to ask, and what kinds of restrictions you might be looking at. And we're trying to put this all into one spot that's easy to find for future use. But communication is always, is always something that we work on.
Just one quick response to that, though, was the gentleman that said, and I've been to these meetings, if that wasn't your intent to take away my property rights, well, the first proposal did take away my property rights. And it's like this gentleman said a while back, he says, "Would it have passed if none of us would have known that this was going on?" I think the council could be more receptive in making sure that their constituents are aware of these meetings going on. And there's no reason at all for not having it on your website.
Dennis Peters, I'm Mark and Sharon's neighbor. I wouldn't be here tonight if they hadn't told me. Where do we go from here? What's the next step? Are we, can we have dates and who, where this is going to go? Does it go back to the planning commission? Does it go to the city council? Will there be another town hall meeting before this ordinance is presented?
Do you want me to address that? It does not need to go back to the planning commission, no. I think a lot of it will probably have to do with the planning department's time and when they're going to be able to actually get a draft. The emails that you're putting down there and getting that draft, a lot of that may have to do with that response, if there's a vigorous response. She's wonderful, by the way, that would get off and bring me this stuff in the middle of a meeting. So, but we have this list. I'm confident that Mr. Johnson is going to put a list out, if there is another meeting on the subject, you'll get an email that will say, "We're going to have another town hall." Or, and certainly when, you said the draft, if there's another town hall, that will go out. And certainly as it gets up for another public comment period in our council meeting, you'll get a specific email beyond just the regular agenda-type emails that we send out. I hope that wasn't...
That is helpful. However, this may be a rhetorical question, but is this meeting being recorded tonight as a public meeting?
It is being recorded.
And just you'll know, it will very likely not go to planning, and I've talked to the staff, there is no rush to push this through. This is going to be vetted on every part of it, because it's a 100-page document, and a lot of the major issues have been resolved. And so, there is not a rush to do this, so...
Yeah, and the other thing I would say as far as with the process is, right now, we're not planning another town hall. That doesn't mean that there won't be one. The process will be staff preparing this ordinance. You'll see it if you've signed up for that, and then we will continue through the council process, work sessions, vetting it through. If there's public comments at council meetings, that will occur. It will be up to the council if they want to have another town hall, but that will be the process. I've got some other people that have comments here. Now, we have about 10 or 12 minutes. I've got two or three hands up here. I'm going to get it to them, and then we'll see where we're at.
I mean, I'll be sticking around, so...
My name is Doug Shelby. I guess I'm the big bad wolf as a developer. We have some holdings here in the city. Oh, okay, okay. I would really like to see some of the creek be re-vegetated back to the way it was pre-'84. And it's really impossible to do this with this stuff. Probably most of you don't know what the Big Cottonwood Creek was like prior to the floods. It was beautiful, and it looks like crap now. But you can't do anything with it. We own 3,600 feet of Big Cottonwood Creek bank, but they won't let you touch it. And it's really sad, because if we developed that, we would like to make it look decent and be able to repair that damage, which was done in '84. And I'd really appreciate it if the city would kind of take some sort of initiative to help you go through the Army Corps Engineers and stuff like that to make it look like a better place. But I think that's something that, I don't know if you want to have that in your sleds ordinance, but it's something that we're going to be looking at as we do development along there. What do we do with this big cliff that the county put up there back in '84 when they came in and pushed all the boulders up against?
For clarity, Doug, you're talking about along the banks in the riparian area, not revegetating the creek bed itself?
Well, I don't know where the creek bed starts.
I would call that high watermark, but then I'm not an engineer.
High watermark in '84 was really hot. So, I don't know, but there could be a lot done to make it look more appealing, because a lot of it is man-made. They just, the county took a dozer and pushed all these big boulders up against the bank, and that's what we have now. And it wasn't natural.
Doug, I was going to mention, a lot of the problem is, is the water flow coming out of there was so great, it's not the sleepy little creek it used to be. We have the same thing in Little Cottonwood Creek, where the Gambian Baskets, or some of them are, what, eight, eight feet tall or so? And so, when you have to keep it within its banks, they have had to do some things that take away from the natural beauty of it. I'm not sure what they could, what we could do, but we could always look into that.
Because one of the problems, most people don't live by the creek, so they don't notice it, but all the big rocks drop out at the mouth of the canyon. And the creek bed has come up like eight feet in the last 12 years. So, if we have a big flood, which may be this year, it's going to be terrible. And the Army Corps Engineers guy told me, he said, "Well, the creek wants to meander." And I said, "Well, you can't have a meander through Old Mill Estates. That doesn't make any sense." So, anyway, that's kind of my recommendation. Maybe you can have something to help.
Okay, we've got, I believe, did you have, okay, one here and then one here. We have two more comments, and we may have to run out of time here unless you want to keep going, so...
Hello, my name's Alan Nielsen. I appreciate being able to comment tonight. I will say that, you know, I think as property owners, we do need to be more aware of when changes are going on in our land and our properties that we worked so hard to maintain. I have a long history here in Cottonwood Heights. I was here long before Cottonwood Heights was here. My grandfather homesteaded the piece of property I'm on in 1928. One thing that hasn't been addressed very much tonight that I'd love to see is there are a few of us on the creek, and I do live on Little Cottonwood Creek, that own big pieces of property, and we're trying to maintain them like they were when they were first in our family. And we're having a hard time with the city and that with, you know, the way that we've always used it. They want to come change it and tell us that we can't use it for what we want to do and what we have been doing for years. And my family's been doing it since, you know, we've been farming that property since And we have livestock and all kinds of things, and we are in a zone that is zoned for that. But then, there's little rules that are made that come up that then you find yourself in a court battle with the city, because you want to keep things in your, on your property that you've had for, even before you're born, your relatives had it. So, I was in favor of Cottonwood Heights being developed. I actually fought for Cottonwood Heights to leave the county. I was one of them that supported that big time. I am concerned that we need to put more into preexistence conditions that have been brought up tonight, and that we need to think about people that have been here and invested their lives for not only one generation, but I've lived on my property, I built my house 29 years ago. So, I've lived there myself then. My mother and a lot of my aunts and uncles have lived on this property and still do live on the property that's around. My grandfather had quite a big piece, the school behind us. A lot of that property was actually taken from my, our family to build the school when the school was built. So, we've been along, we are right on the creek. We are interested in making sure that it stays the way it is, and to keep it beautiful like some of the things that have been brought up today. So, that is our concern. I own a huge part of the bank, and I would really like to see it addressed, or someone to address how we could, you know, somehow put something that if you are an owner of this property for years, that you get to keep using it for what you started using it for in the first place. Thank you very much. And again, I want to throw a note out to our law officers and that, that we do appreciate everything they're doing and keeping us safe here. We live in a great city. Thanks.
Thanks, Alan.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Shaw. I'm not the Jennifer Shaw from Real Housewives, clearly. But I have been a resident of Cottonwood Heights for the last 16 years, and also a volunteer in the form of a planning commissioner for three to four years about a decade ago. And I am also a current member of our Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight and taking the time to be engaged in civics. This is really inspiring to see how much you care. The city has also really heard your concerns, and as we heard in the presentation tonight, has, is willing to make changes to address those concerns, such that the ordinance works for all of our residents. I do, though, want to give more voice to those who are in support of this ordinance, such as the folks who live along Big Cottonwood Creek, and also recognize that the ordinance provides a legacy for future generations, especially when we're talking about redevelopment in major commercial areas. It's a real opportunity to have a tool that encourages rehabilitation of these kinds of areas, riparian zones, greenways, in an urban core, especially as we see so much intense pressure and growth in our city. And I've heard from many residents about the fear that our city will look more like Salt Lake City and not like Cottonwood Heights. And so, an ordinance like this will help to preserve the character that we have in our city. Um... help to preserve the character that we have in our city, um, when those redevelopment opportunities come about. They'll also provide green space in areas where we don't have a lot of park density, um, which is something that we've been trying to, um, um, encourage through the Parks Trail and Open Space Committee, access for everybody to get to our parks. Also, you know, it's getting hotter. I think everybody would agree that summers recently have been pretty hot. And the more trees that we can have in areas, especially concrete asphalt areas, is a good thing. This also aligns with a tree ordinance that our city recently passed. So I hear your concerns, but I also hope that we all recognize the balance of the benefits that an ordinance like this provides for our city. Thank you.
So it's eight-thirty. We're going to have a wrap-up by the council members and, and uh-
I was given direction to have this, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Doug.
I'm fine if Scott, Tim goes home and I'm fine if Mike goes home. I'll, I'll be here answering questions. And I've got the stuff for you. So if you'll hang back just a little bit. But, uh, don't feel, if you've got another question you want to ask individually, I will at least be around.
Scott, not to one up you, but I will also be around, but I'll be along, around a little longer than you.
Okay.
But I want to thank everyone for being here. This is, uh, this is very encouraging to see the, the participation, to see the young people here that came here, are here to see a little bit about government, uh, and what we do. How important is our government and, for our city? I mean, it affects your lives and our lives every day. And when we have a national election, everybody's worried about that too. But think how important it is to be involved within your city. So grateful for you and your participation tonight. Hopefully we've answered a lot of the questions. Uh, if we haven't, we want to do that. There's no rush to get this ordinance pushed through. Yeah, I, I, I'm so grateful for what you've done here tonight. And you, you should be applauded for that. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. I guess you can go now.